Meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Uh, the first item we have is going to have a roll call, please.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Erasmo Villarreal?
Present.
Vice Chair Jorge Dominguez.
Present.
Rafael Duñez. Rafael Duñez. Commissioner Abraham Lugo. Commissioner Abraham Lugo. Commissioner Johnny Arvise.
Present.
Commissioner Raúl Ugarte. Commissioner Raúl Ugarte. Commissioner Larry Divalina.
Here.
And Commissioner Ana Gabriela Villarreal.
Present.
Mr. Chairman, do you have more?
Okay, thank you. Can we have a motion? I know that Commissioner Duñez and Commissioner Lugo contacted me. They're both out of town. Uh, to excuse the commission members that are absent.
Uh, Larry Divalina, so move.
Have motion. Do we have a second?
Arvise, second.
Arvise, second. Those who are in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. None heard. Motion carries. Thank you. The next item is citizens' comments. Kirby, do we have anybody on citizens' comments?
Well, sir, as you recall, it does take a couple minutes from what's shown here to be broadcast live to our audience at home. That's watching, the thousands who are watching this. So if we could just give it a little bit of time, and while we're doing that, it's a good time to remind everybody that when if you can keep yourself muted, except for, of course, when you're speaking, unmute yourself. And if you forget, I'll mute you. Don't mean to be rude. Just want to make sure we have the best audio recording for the public. And so I'll be doing that. And we don't have anybody on the line, but when, if and when we do, we will let you know.
Thank you, Kirby. Next item that we have is the consideration of the approval of the minutes of a special meeting of April the ninth of 2021 and a regular meeting of April the 15th of 2021.
Divalina moved to approve.
We have motion. Do we have a second?
Second, Villarreal.
Second by Ana Villarreal. All those who are not in favor of the motion to approve, signify by saying aye. None heard. Motion carries. Next item. Discussion and recommendations, item five A. Discussion and recommendation regarding an amendment to section 24.6, 2.5, and 24.6, 2.6 of the Rado Land Development Code, allowing for the administrative amendment of existing special and conditional use permits under certain conditions. Yes, sir, Kirby.
Yes, we have two amendments to the ordinance that we're bringing to the planning commission today for your recommendation to city council. And the first one is dealing with administrative approval of special use permits and conditional use permits. Now, this is going to change with RECODE anyway, but we want to bring it forward because RECODE won't be coming till August to the city council and planning commission in a joint email, I mean, in a joint workshop. Uh, but if anything comes up before then, we want to be able to deal with special use and conditional use permits administratively. And as I said, with RECODE, we're taking out a lot of the special use and conditional use permits and just making them as of right where they, where they're, where they should be. And we always will still have a conditional use permit process. It's going to be merged into one. And, but it will be used a lot less. But where we have them and where they exist, if somebody's coming in with the same conditions, we want to be able to have an administrative approval process. Our, our thinking is that if the conditions aren't changing, then it would be as if the owner kept operating it under the existing conditions. And so we want to speed that process up because otherwise they have to come back to planning commission and city council, and it's a two to three month process. And as you know, a lot of these cells are contingent on them being able to continue to operate whatever they're operating, the sale of a business or a piece of property. And so, um, it will be a complete application that has to be still submitted. They can demonstrate everything in the, in the application. They, they, they are, you know, that they would be if they're going through the process. Except we can identify that if all the conditions, they, they agree to keep all the conditions the same, then we can transfer them to the new owner. And the planning director can have that authority to do so. Yeah, I want to note, though, that we did make a provision in the ordinance that if the current property owner or business is out of compliance with any of those conditions, then then the planning director may decide that it needs to go back through the process. So the reason we put that in there is, let's say there is a sale of a property that has a conditional use permit, except many of the conditions are not being met. And then at that point, I could say, okay, as planning director, I can approve this if you show me a plan for how you're going to get this into compliance. But if they don't have a good plan, or if I don't trust that's a good plan, then I'm going to bring it back to the planning, I'm going to let it go through the normal process of the planning commission, city council, so you can determine, maybe this isn't a good location for a special use or conditional use permit because they have a history of violating the conditions and it's impacting the surrounding neighbors negatively. And so we, that's part of the draft in there. And the draft was in the, in the, um, packet for the public and yourself to view. And, but it's basically what's written here. So we would like a, the impact is that this will allow us to greatly speed up the process for special use and conditional use permits where the conditions stay the same. And we recommend that you send a positive recommendation to the city council on this amendment. Any questions I can answer for you?
Does the commissioners have any questions for Kirby?
What was the rationale that was used when the ordinance was initially created? And the planning director didn't have the authority to do this. Do you know?
I can't speak to that now. It's about thirty years old, forty, thirty, forty years old.
Larry Marina Sukup is the one that wrote this up way back in the nineties. I don't know if you remember her, but she was planning director.
Of course, I remember her.
But to that, to that point, to your point, I can say that most cities have an administrative process.
Kirby, I think this is a good amendment, um, because it did, it was kind of redundant, like you were saying, to make somebody, let's say it's going to be a sale of a property. Property is, you know, uh, meeting all the conditions for the special use or conditional use. The only thing they need to do is an administrative change in the name of the property, and I think this is a very good recommendation on, on, you know, changing the ordinance to allow this to administrative process. Does anybody else on the commission have any, any questions or any feedback or anything to this thing?
I also.
Sorry, go ahead.
I also believe that is a good recommendation, Erasmo, and I think we should send a positive recommendation to city council.
I agree. Anybody else on the commission have anything else to ask? All right. Nobody else has anything else to add? Can we have a motion to approve and recommend this to the city council?
I'll make that motion to approve and send a positive recommendation to city council.
We have motion. Do we have a second?
Second, Villarreal.
Second by Villarreal. All those who are not in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. None heard. Motion carries. Thank you. Next item.
Okay, this is the second of the two ordinance amendments we're bringing to you for your consideration. This is amending section four dash two dash H point one of the subdivision ordinance, not the land development code, of the subdivision ordinance. In there, there's a list of, of exceptions that the building authority can apply for building permits to still go forward in the process. And this one allows the building official, official to issue a permit to unplanted lots. Uh, it just amends that condition slightly so that they can also allow the reconstruction. So it allows for the construction or the modification of, of buildings that are on unplanted lots, but have, but have, are grandfathered in, basically. This would allow the reconstruction, so the complete replacement of something that, uh, you know, a building that's on an unplanted lot and already has services, utilities are already there. You're aware that there are these within the city. We don't want to allow new development in those situations. We want them to go through the planning process. But where there's already an existing building, we not only want to allow for modification, but a total reconstruction of that building because it would benefit the neighborhood, it would benefit the property owner, it would benefit, uh, the occupant of that building, whether a renter or homeowner, to be able to reconstruct their building and do it correctly and do it, I mean, do it through a building permit. So they're doing it to code. So this is a good thing. And it came about from somebody who, who, um, this is an exper, we, we, this is somebody we're dealing with who they, um, destroyed, they, they demolished their building and now they can't rebuild, even though there had been a building there for decades and they have services, they had utilities. And now they can't build it because it's not planted and there's no ability for them to get, make their lot bigger because there's no property they can buy around them to meet the requirement of being a planted lot, uh, within the city's dimension. So we don't want to see that sit vacant. But we do want to see what they're going to do. They'll be able to build and not be in the setbacks. It's going to be a good development. And so we want to be able to give the building official the authority to give them a permit. And, and, and the other few instances, we don't anticipate this will be very often, but in the instances where there may be something similar, we want to allow for it. The building official is present. If you do have any questions for him, he doesn't have anything prepared, but if you do have any questions for me or him, we're ready to answer. And we would also send, we would, we would also want you to send a positive recommendation to the city council for this amendment.
Kirby, does anybody in the commission have any questions for either Kirby or the building official?
How pervasive is the problem?
My estimate would be that we probably have, um, a couple hundred buildings that are on unplanted lots. But of those couple hundred buildings, we might only see one a year or one every other year that that is a total reconstruction. So in other words, this is very, very minor, but it is, I think, a justifiable exception because a lot of these lots, there is no way they could become legal compliant. And, um, people are living there right now. Do we, do we want to allow them to remake the building to code? It would benefit everybody, including the neighborhood.
And are these, are these lots that were once planted, that somebody illegally subdivided them and then created two lots? And in fact, the lots aren't recorded? Is that what this is?
Without going into too much detail, there was a, there was a, a time in 1978 when we said, okay, any illegal subdivision after this is no longer going to be allowed, but everything before, we're going to go ahead and make it legal. That was 1978. Since 1978, there still have been things that were built illegally and somehow or another, and I won't lay any blame to any, uh, any city staff that may have worked here during those years, but for some reason or another, they received utilities and were able to occupy these homes. And in other words, it's the city's fault for allowing them to have a history. Now, obviously now, today, the way we do things, we're not going to allow anybody to construct something, um, and, and we're going to be looking for that to make sure illegal buildings and structures don't go up and definitely don't receive utilities. But where they have a long history, even after 1978, of being occupants and having, and the city having extended utilities to them, that in my mind, gives them claim to be able to continue to exist. In other words, it'd be difficult to say, you have to tear this down when the city gave them utilities, allowed them to live there or rent there for twenty years. And, and now we're saying, no, you, we, we're not allowing you to modify your home with, to code or to re, to reconstruct your home to code, even though we've allowed you to live here and for twenty years. So.
Kirby, but most of these things that you're talking about are outside the city limits. They're not within the.
No, sir. No, these, these are all inside the city limits and particularly in our, in our inner city. And our downtown where we have a lot of.
In the downtown?
Yes, sir.
We have unplanted property?
Yes.
It's all part of the Spanish language.
Well, when I, excuse me, when I say unplanted, I meant, uh, lots of record that have been illegally subdivided.
Oh, okay. That's like a different neighborhood. Now, that's a different issue. Yeah, okay. Yeah. There you go. Yeah, I got you. I got you. I know exactly what you're talking about.
Yeah, as it's written here, that's not, I can see where you're seeing that because on the impact analysis, it says unplanted lots. It, it should say illegal subdivisions.
Okay.
Illegal lots.
Uh, yeah. All right. Now, I think.
A lot of the downtown properties were illegally subdivided and
Right.
sewer lines run on the avenues and all these guys build these little stores on the streets. And so remember the smell that everybody complained about? It was, they were dropping into the storm drain, the sewage.
Yeah, but and the effect that there is also lots that were illegally subdivided and we have actually city utilities running through private property and that affect the environment.
That's correct.
I have to do that a lot, so. Okay, that's, yeah, but just change the wording, I guess, uh.
Yes, sir. It just is. It's just in this, it's just in this PowerPoint presentation where it's not correct. It is correct in in the ordinance that were, the draft ordinance amendment.
All right. Anybody else in the commission have anything else to ask or? All right. Nobody else? Got a motion from Larry? Do we have a second?
Second, Dominguez.
Second from Dominguez. All those who are not in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. With none heard, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner, if I can ask, uh, if we can excuse the building official as he has no other business here today. Thank you, Jerry. Thanks for coming.
Thank you all.
All right, Jerry. Thank you. The next item we have is item six A, uh, and the first item that we have is the, uh, consideration of the name change of the plat, Calady Diaz, replat to Calady Diaz Townhome. All right?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. A quick overview. The applicant is Edward Beckelheimer of Calady Commercial Investments. The engineer of record is Bewa Consulting. It's approximately six acres located west of Bob Bullock and north of Quail, uh, Blue Quail Road. And the zoning for this eight lot development is B three and B four. General location. Aerial view. Street view. The, the proposed plat, which you will be seeing, uh, here shortly for model's approval as well. And it's just a request for the name change.
Uh, Kirby, couldn't that have been done administratively?
No, sir.
What's the reason of that?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, we do have a provision in our, in our subdivision ordinance for, uh, getting an official change of name to bring it to the planning and zoning commission, and there is an official fee for that. So I know, I know it's semantics and actually this would be good to do administratively. I totally agree with you, but.
Yeah. It, it didn't, okay. All right. So it's a violation of a, an existing subdivision. All right. All right. Anybody have any questions?
Yep.
Nobody has any questions? Do we have a motion on this particular item?
Uh, make a motion to approve.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, all right. All those who are not in favor of this, let's signify by saying aye. None heard. Motion carries. Next item. Is the review and consideration of the following master plans. The first one is the Gator Point Master Plan, the intended residential and commercial. Yes, sir?
Uh, for the record, the applicant is George Martinez, engineer of record, Bewa Consulting. Approximately one hundred and nineteen acres located north of State Highway fifty-nine and west of the Rado landfill. The zoning for this six hundred and thirteen lot development is R one and A G, and the proposed use is residential and commercial. General location. Aerial view. Street view. Proposed master plan. Comments from planning. Engineering, water utilities. Water utilities and traffic safety. And from Texas Department of Transportation. Parks and Leisure. And the proposed motion.
And if I can, if we can just ask the engineers, please keep your mic muted and your video off until the, until the commission has to speak, ask you to speak. Thank you.
All right. Do we have the engineer of record on? Oscar.
Uh, yes, uh, Chairman and staff, this is Oscar Castillo for the record, um, with, uh, Bewa Consulting representing Martinez. And for some reason, I cannot start my video, but, but I, I, if you can hear me fine, I'm, I'm good.
Yeah, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, we concur with the comments except for, uh, six and seven. Six and seven. Uh, six and seven, they're, uh, limiting the access uh, to, I guess, pretty much to the city. And I don't know if Texas is going to grant us uh, 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 one or two or just a write-in or something. But I would like to change those two comments for that, uh, just that we have to go through Texas to get any access through, through Texas property instead of six and seven. Other than that, we concur.
You're talking about the planning comment, six and seven?
Yes, planning comments, six and seven.
Okay, all right. All right, so. Now, you're saying that you don't know if Texas is going to grant you an entrance to these commercial tracks? Is that what you're saying, Oscar?
What I'm saying is that, uh, usually, you know, that is, uh, something that we go through Texas and, and they, you know, sometimes they ask us, like, like they're stating, a, a few requirements to, to have a, a write-in or, or to have a writing right out or, or any access to their, you know, within their, uh, property. So these, uh, these two comments will restrict by plat the access through, uh, three fifty-nine. So that's why I, uh, I, uh, I concur except for those two. Yeah. And, and we're fine if, if we can add something about, uh, that any access, uh, through Texas should be approved by, by them and or something like that, which is usually normal, a, a comment like that. But other than that, we concur with the comments.
Oscar, what is the length of this drainage that you have on this plat?
This is, uh, approximately like two thousand, I think, feet.
About two thousand feet?
Yes.
Okay, now. About two thousand. All right. So the lots that you're talking about, pointer or Kirby, that you could kind of guide us through what the commercial lots that he's looking at?
Yes, sir. We do have our tractor director, traffic director on the line, but simply put, what we're asking for here, and it's the same thing Texas is going to ask for. They are, they should not, each of these individual commercial lots should not get, uh, individual access to Highway three fifty-nine. They should have a shared access onto this, uh, one road that will access this whole subdivision. Uh, Danny, would you like to speak anything further on that?
Good evening, uh, D N Z Commissioner. This is Danny McGee, City Traffic Director. Um, if Kirby's okay removing those comments, that's fine with me, or if he wants to keep them, that's fine also, but I'll be working with Texas on this. I think there's a comment that we were asking for a traffic study, so they'll address those things. I, I'm sure we can reach some kind of conclusion, but I, I, I think Kirby's right, was we don't want so many connections on this highway. So if you want to keep them on there, that's okay. If you want to limit them and leave them in my hands, work with Texas, that's another route, whatever the commission want to do.
Well, I'm fine with striking them because this, that right-of-way belongs to the state and, and I can tell you right now, they're going to agree with those comments that are there. So it, it really, it's the redundant being there, but Texas is not going to allow access for each of those individual lots.
Well, I think.
But the planning commission also has the ability to say, no, we agree with you. We don't want five access points for, for here on three fifty-nine that's unsafe. Um, yeah, it maybe adds more value to these commercial properties, but, but we as the planning commission are concerned about the safety of that road and the traffic on that road. And so regardless of what Texas says, that is the right way to do it, shared access onto this one road. And, uh, but, you know, if you don't, if you say, no, we don't agree with you, Kirby, it's okay because Texas is going to, they're not going to allow individual access for each of those lots.
Well, I, I believe the comment that Texas had was that a traffic analysis is going to be necessary to determine what to do and whether they're going to need acceleration and deceleration lanes. As it is, this road is already carrying a lot of traffic, so. If it takes on right-of-way, I think for the traffic analysis study, I think that'll probably, you know, determine exactly what needs to be done. And with Danny working on that, I think we should be fine with that. I mean, I'm, I'm open to any comments from anybody else on this.
Uh, if I may, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Dominguez, I think, I think we should leave the comments there and, uh, and probably add that those will be, uh, pending the outcome of the, of the study. Uh, I think, uh, on this one, Kirby is right. Well, he's always right, but for this one, he has a point there. And I believe that, uh, that we should leave that, uh, that particular comments and then let, uh, the engineer Castillo to, to go ahead and, and break it down with, uh, Texas. And then if he gets something positive from Texas, that would allow him different access point into the property, then either, either administratively, that can be worked out with, uh, with a proof and the, and the test results on the hand. I mean, that can be removed, but I think at this time, it would be better to leave them there. Three fifty-nine is, uh, we need to, to create less traffic into three fifty-nine as possible. I understand, uh, Oscar, that, uh, it would be more appropriate to, to grant an access, but you don't have the study right now and wouldn't have the answer from Texas. So by the time be, I think we should leave those, uh, everything as it is. If, uh, if he wants to, uh, to accept what it is, or maybe, maybe he might want to table them and then get the study, traffic study and come back for approval. Uh, that's only a comment, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Oscar, do you have anything? Go ahead.
Yes. Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the thing is, if this, uh, they're getting into Texas property, I agree. Or not, I don't disagree. They, they may not like it, but that, or they may not allow us to get a, a Texas driveway. But now the city is making the decision for Texas. Now, now we can, with this note there, we cannot, it doesn't matter what the, 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 uh, T I A says, because now you, we have the restriction on the and if we leave it there, then I, I will have to get it approved by Texas and then come back and say, okay, you know, now remove them and, and replat and, and do. So I think these, like I said, I don't have a problem with saying that Texas needs to, and, and like, Kirby feels pretty confident that they're not going to approve them. And really, that may be the case, but it may be that they asked us to put a, 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 an auxiliary lane and they, they grant us a write-in only. And why would take that away? I mean, why? I mean, with these, you're taking that away and it's not city's property. It's, it's the state, it's the state, the one that has the jurisdiction.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, may I say something, Danny McGee again?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, uh, something that's getting lost in this whole thing is, yes, it is Texas right-of-way, but the applicant has to get a permit from both city and Texas. Yes, I just Texas. Just because Texas says something doesn't mean that we'll grab the same thing. So, uh, for the sake of moving, moving on, if you want to take those comments off, uh, if you'll trust in my judgment to work with Texas, uh, I'll make sure that those, your wishes are carried out, you know, at, at least the spirit of them. But, uh, I, I don't see a whole lot of other driveways being granted by Texas and, you know, you, you know, my, my background is in that area. So I'll be looking at it from the same point of view.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all. All right.
Real quick. If we remove those comments, we need to put something there that, uh, that then we need a result from Texas and then decide planning and zoning staff to make the decision in accordance to the outcome and the permitting of Texas. So, I mean, if, uh, Oscar, if, if you want to remove, I, I might, uh, make a motion to remove them, provided that we have an outcome positive and, uh, and that also traffic department, it's, uh, it's in accordance to that. The way I see it is that it's going to be very hard for Texas to approve it. So I think, Oscar, what you're trying to do is trying to take a chance. And, uh, and you will still come back because if they don't approve it, then you will still have to come back and show us how you're going to redact, redirect the traffic inside from the, from the main entrance. So that's the reason that I want to leave them there and then come back and approve them when you have something that you can show us. But of course, I mean, it's up to the board. Uh, we can do it both ways, Mr. Chairman.
I agree. You know, I, in my, in my time working with the city, anytime we had a platform that had Texas adjacent to it, a traffic impact analysis involved is conducted. I give you some examples where they would only allow X number of, uh, openings. When we built the Walmart and some, but not of them. Uh, and that whole complex, we had to do a ring road. we had to do a ring road within the property, cuz there was only a couple of entrances that were allowed. This reminds me of a very similar, Oscar, this reminds me of something very similar to what you're proposing. Given that we've had a lot of accidents on 359, especially on left-ended turns in that area, the traffic analysis is gonna dictate what the number of openings should be. Obviously, with the amount of traffic on there and, and you got your traffic director, everybody can attest to something like this, what you wanna do is limit the number of penetrations, or for lack of a better word, you know, on what's coming in. Internal circulation coming off of one major entrance and exit is really what you would want, to limit accidents. But again, that's a traffic impact analysis that has to be done. I don't think the comments that we have in the planning eh section really make any difference, to be honest with you, because it's a Tex- decision, they're the ones that are gonna grant the, the entrance. So, you know, that's my, my thought on that, I mean. But again, whatever the wishes of the commission are, if anybody else has anything to say, I'm willing to listen.
Are they eh still using a thousand-foot separation between driveways? Is that still the common practice, Danny?
Dad, can you hear?
I'm sorry, I was still muted, I apologize. On something like this, the minimum spacing between drivers would be about 425 feet, it's a high-speed area. So that, that's gonna dictate a lot of the, of the driveway spacing right there. And, and the, and the other thing that would dictate driveway, driveways is what you mentioned earlier is, is eh, in, in most, this case, it'll probably be an acceleration, I mean, sorry, deceleration lane, and that would preclude any driveways, cuz Tex- doesn't like driveways in eh deceleration lanes.
And just to what eh, Mr. Dominguez was saying, I, I am, I am proposing that taking those out and then adding the one from Tex- and that they need to approve it. And actually, Tex- and the traffic department already have the comments there, and we're not opposing to those. We are concurring with those, because we know we still need to go, we, we just don't want, like, for example, if in the future they put a median and now is viable to have an extra one, then this will limit that, and, and I just wanna eh have that eh, that, that, that option, you know, like, and, and I know it's gonna be difficult and it may not happen, but please, just eh, like I said, like eh, the option that eh Mr. Dominguez was saying, the commission, just to add that comment from eh Tex-, I'm fine with that. And like I said, actually, Tex- and the traffic department already have them there, so, so there, and we concur with those. Thank you.
Kirby?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Larry.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah.
You were thinking that eh, that those comments, I think that he wanted strictly to be strictly replaced with a comment that says that the driveways should be determined based on traffic impact analysis, which like Kirby said is a redundant thing. That's already in the Tex- right of way, but if that's what you wanna add to it, to replace those, I don't know.
What, what Oscar is saying eh, is that eh, that now if we, if the, if it comes stay there, he is eh already bound to it, see, he has to go on that particular route. Whereas if we change the comments, we leave them, but we change them, and we add that eh they will actually be eh, eh, approved, consider, pending consideration at Tex- on those entrances, see. One of the reasons that I don't agree to that is because one of the biggest problems that we have in those eh, in those eh highways, too many entrances at one time. So that creates a lot of traffic, a lot of problems with eh, with accidents. It's not about the, the subdivision, it's not, I mean, it's about the amount of entrances that we're gonna have. If, if it would be the entrance and then there would be a separate road inside the property that will, that will communicate all of the four commercial lots, that would be ideal, because it would be one entrance and the traffic would be moving inside the commercial areas without intruding or affecting the traffic on Highway 359. Now, it is, in all fairness, for eh, for the engineer to, to change or to add to those comments, wherein if Tex- allow the multiple entrances, then so it be. I doubted that they're gonna go ahead and approve him, and he's gonna have to come back and show us how he's gonna move the traffic inside those commercial areas. But if that's what he wants, I mean, I don't have a problem with that. The idea is not to stop it, the idea is to work with him. Kirby?
Yeah, I would follow the recommendation of our traffic director, Danny McGee, and he's okay with striking those comments. He feels confident that between him and Tex- that they're gonna work out eh what's safe here. And, and I'm sure it's gonna be very similar to what we've proposed, which is limiting access or having no access and having shared access. That is the better way to do it. There is no doubt that traffic on 359 is already, there's already a lot of traffic and it's only going one direction, that's more. So the right way to do it is to have shared access off of one access for the whole development, rather than any individual access, even decel lanes and, but, you know, so if, if they wanna try to work, you know, Oscar wants to, to eh do his best to try to convince and, you know, our traffic director, Mr. McGee, is open to striking those comments, then I would follow his recommendation.
Alright, given that, do we have a motion to the effect? Cortez?
Yeah, the eh, the motion is to approve and that we leave, that eh, we leave the comments for six and seven, but we add that they will only apply to the subdivision if Tex- will, will provide the access to those lots individually.
Alright.
That's my motion right there. And Oscar, that, that shouldn't affect you.
Alright, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Yep. Can we talk about something like making it contingent on eh, an outcome instead of eh?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
But you need a second to discuss the motion.
I second.
Alright, we have a second, now we can have discussion.
Okay, can we?
Yes, sir. I, I will change, I will change my motion to eh, to reflect that it will be contingent eh, they will only prevail contingent to the outcome of Tex-. Yes, sir.
I'm done.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, good with that?
Aye.
Okay, you're good with eh, with that eh, motion, right? Your second on that?
Yes, I'm good.
Okay, although if we're not in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. I'm sorry, I didn't hear anything. I went blank here for a second, I don't know what happened. All those who are not in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye? None heard, motion carries, thank you. Next item, consideration of the following preliminary flat. Preliminary consideration of the plat of Gator Point subdivision phase one, the intent is residential and commercial.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The, for the record, the applicant is George Martinez, engineer of record, Beau Consulting LLC. Approximately nineteen one four acres located north of State Highway 359 and west of Siloan landfill. The zoning is R1 and A G, and the proposed use is residential and commercial. General location, aerial view, street view, and the proposed plat. Comments from planning, engineering, utility coordination, water utilities and traffic safety, and Tex- and Tex- and Parks and Leisure, and the proposed motion.
Alright, alright, did we have the engineer of record, this is in agreement?
Yes, Mr. eh Chairman eh, hello again, this is Oscar Castillo for the record and eh representing eh Martinez eh paving and, and George Martinez. And we concur except for five for the same reason and will be, if we could adjust, adjust to say the same thing, that is contingent of Tex- approval on, 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 on any, on 359, any access on 359.
Alright, so you're concurring with everything except you wanna, you want an additional addition in that eh, at eh, this Tex- institute.
Mr. Chairman, Danny McGee eh, when it's appropriate, can I make a comment? Let me know when, please.
Go right ahead now.
Okay, um, this, this phase is, is out of the master plan we just discussed, right, unless I missed something?
Right, that's correct.
So I, I would, I guess, I'm not sure, I guess eh, suggest that this not proceed until the master plan is worked out, because it's tied our hands in the, in the past when the master plan is still pending and, and phases get approved, and then it's kinda hard to correlate the two, especially if we're gonna require internal circulation or something, so.
But this is not pending, I mean, the, the, the master plan was approved with that eh, you know, with that restriction.
Well, the, the master plan is approved, but it's still ma, if, if the, if you can't get driveways to, to the highway, you're gonna have to provide, I, I mean, and I guess if you can assure that it's not gonna change anything else, that you're gonna be able to provide internal circulation i, if there are no other driveways approved to the highway.
Chairman, if I may, um, Mr. Castillo, please wait till the chairman asks you to eh, to, to comment. He will get your opinion, but please don't, um, please wait for him to, to ask on that. And Mr. McGee, I think the, the comment would be not that we take, not that we wait for the outcome of the T I A of the master plan, not that we eh, you know, you, you're right, the master plan was just approved with conditions, and the, one of those conditions was a T I A. So I think what Mr. McGee is saying, before we approve this phase, we wait for the outcome of the T I A on the whole master plan, because that may affect this phase. And I think that is a prudent eh thing to ask, that this not be approved, that this be-
If I misspeak, and I apologize, like I said, and if there's, there's allowances for one contingency be the other, then I withdraw my, my suggestion, I guess, but I just wanna make sure that we don't, it doesn't tie our hands into being able to resolve internal circulation.
Yeah, I think the key here on this thing is eh, everything is contingent on the, the T I A. The master plan has got some approval, but it's got a lot of conditions on it that has to be met. Before any of these phases can actually be constructed, the T I A has to be done. And the T I A is gonna dictate, obviously, you know, the type of circulation and stuff. So the question then comes up, phase one that he's asking for approval of is something that is gonna be contingent on the T I A anyway. Am I correct, Kirby?
Yes.
Oscar, go ahead. Oscar, go ahead.
I mean, they keep muting, muting me, I mean, eh, the, the access is eh, is gonna have to be, I mean, they're not gonna allow us to connect until a T I A and Tex- and the city give us that permit. So there's no sense to, to stop the development, because without this, I cannot proceed with my plat. And then this, I have never seen, I, I have never connected in my fifteen years in, in the city that I, I have never done a connection without Tex- approval. I mean, so it needs to have a, we're gonna have a T I A, we're gonna have a, it may, just, just to, for the record, regardless if it's the entrance through eh, through Gator or, or to 359 with a ride in or whatever, if, if that happens, we're gonna have internal circulation, because I know in the best case scenario, they, they may grant one more. So internal circulation is gonna happen and, and eh, it, it's just, it doesn't make sense, in my opinion, to, to stop this, because this will eh, will stop me to, to continue while anyway, if they, if they don't allow it, then we'll just do the street, we'll just do it. And, and if you wanna add that comment that to, you know, to, to have a internal circulation, we, because we're gonna do that either way, I mean, e, either way, e, either, either way of the outcomes. We know is not gonna have, it may be that like eh, Mr. Snanda was saying, it may be that they don't even grant us one, but if they, but they may, if they eh, if I convince them to have a ride in or something, we, we will have to have an internal circulation and we'll have access easements and everything. But eh, we just, and we, we just starting the, the plating process and, and if you put that eh, extra comment on the eh, we're gonna have to show that before going to finance. So I don't see why at this point you will, you won't let me go, you won't let me continue and stop this development.
Oscar, let me ask you a question, and I, unless I'm wrong, but this development is directly north of 359, right?
Excuse me?
This development is on the north side of, of Highway 359.
Correct, correct, correct.
And you keep saying ride in, well, if I am correct, most of the traffic is gonna come going west to east. So how you, how does this ride in that you're talking about, I'm, I'm trying to understand your comment.
No, 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 eh, I guess it's, it's just, it's just eh, an example. Obviously, if that's the case, that they just have a, they just allow us to ride in. Obviously, I would try to get eh, 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 ride in, ride out in the middle, but it has happened that if they grant us just ride in and we just eh, for a, any other access, we need to go through Gator, then it's still helpful.
Oscar, eh, if this is gonna be a subdivision residential, and it's all gonna come back towards the city, eh, I'm still having trouble understanding your ride in and ride out comment. I can see the ride out, it's not a problem if you're coming out of the subdivision.
No, it was, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, left.
It, it's just, it was just eh, an example, eh, I, I'm not saying that's what I'm gonna go for.
Okay, alright, that's, that's right, alright, okay.
Yeah.
I got you, I got you.
I, if I may, eh, Mr. Chairman.
Go right ahead.
I, I think we should approve it, and, and I'll tell you why. We already have on the previous item, it was contingent to Tex-. Okay, so he can't do anything, I mean, we approve it right now, before he even gets a permit for that, he has to show the entrance and approval by Tex-. So, I mean, I think that if, if we don't, if we don't approve it, we're just gonna delay him more. So we're gonna give him, it's, it's better to approve it, it might, it might, what I think, it just add that those provisions of the entrance are contingent to Tex- approval and, and we can get over, I mean, we can be here all night and-
No, I agree with you, I agree with you, I don't think it's something that we need to stop, because it's just a matter of T I.
Yes, sir. So I, I would make a motion to approve it and, and to add that eh, any, any entrance conditions are, are contingent to Tex-.
Okay, that's fine, that's your motion, do we have a second to that motion?
Second, the Valina.
Second by the Valina, all those who are not in favor, signify by saying aye? None heard, motion carries, thank you.
Chairman, if I may, this is not a vice, eh, I need to be excused, I have a dinner engagement here in Brownsville, so unfortunately, I have to, I have to hop off.
Alright, thank you.
There, there is, there is the form, right, correct, if I do hop off?
There is.
Okay.
Yeah, I was wondering, yeah, I think so, we're good. Alright, thank you, alright. Alright, the next item is the eh preliminary consideration of the replat of Lot 1A, Block 1, Anil and Associate Subdivision, Phase 1 is Lot 1A dash 1 and Lot 1A dash 2, Block 1, Anil and Associate Subdivision, Phase 1, the intent is commercial, alright?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, for, for the record, the applicant is Anil Gupta. The engineer of records Ricardo Ramos of Durat Engineering, approximately 4.13 acres, located north of Shiloh and west of McPherson. The zoning for this two-lot development is B3 and the proposed use is commercial. General location, aerial view, street view, the proposed replat, comments from planning, engineering, fire and utility coordination, water utilities, traffic safety, parks and leisure, and the proposed motion.
Alright, do we have the engineer of record on the line?
Yes, good afternoon, how you doing, Mr. Ricardo Ramos, it's right.
Yes, sir, go right ahead.
Uh, we concur with the staff comments.
Okay, very good, thank you. Does anybody in the commission have any questions for the staff or for the engineer? Okay, with none heard, eh, what are the wishes of the commission? Anybody in the commission wanna make a motion on this particular item?
Motion to approve subject to the conditions that are laid out.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Do we have a second? Well, I'm gonna second that motion. So that I can just move forward. All those who are not in favor of the motion signified by saying aye? None heard, motion carries, next item. Preliminary consideration of the replat of Lot one, Block one, man, flat, Lot one, Block one. This is at Delmar Boulevard into Lot one A, Lot one B, Lot one C, Lot one D and Lot one E. Block one D, intent is commercial, yes, sir?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the applicant is Via Real Estate LLC, engineer of record, Sherfy Engineering. Approximately four point one six acres located on Interstate thirty five and south of Delmar Boulevard. The zoning for this five lot development is B three and the proposed use is commercial. General location. Aerial view. Street view. Secondary street view. The proposed flat. Comments from planning. Engineering, fire, utility coordination. Water utilities, traffic safety, and the proposed motion.
Do we have the engineer of record on this?
Rafa, the engineer of record?
The engineer of record is Frank Estrada, he was, he is on the line, we did do a mic check earlier with him.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, this is Frank Estrada.
All right.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Frank Estrada with Sherfy Engineering and we have, we concur with staff comments.
Very good, thank you. Does anybody on the commission have any questions to Mr. Estrada? All right, with no questions, what are the wishes of the commission? What are the wishes of the commission?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second, Villarreal.
Second by Villarreal, Anna Villarreal. All right, those who are not in favor of the, signify by saying aye? None heard, motion carries, thank you. The next item, preliminary consideration of the replat of Lot eight, Block two, Los Altos subdivision. Into Lot eight A and Lot eight B, Block two, Los Altos subdivision, intent is residential.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the applicant, Remundo Martinez, engineer of record, civil engineering consultants, approximately eighteen thousand, ninety thousand square feet. Located north of State Highway thirty nine and east of the Siloilo landfill. The zoning for this two lot development is not applicable as it is in the ETJ and the proposed use is residential. General location. Aerial view. Street view. The proposed replat. Comments from planning. Water utilities. And the proposed motion.
All right, do we have the engineer of record? Civil engineering, anybody?
Yes, good evening, members of the commission and staff, Eduardo Ochoa with C E C, and we concur with staff comments.
Thank you.
And you.
From the commission for Mr. Ochoa, all for this staff. No questions heard, what are the wishes of the commission?
Move to approve the motion with the considerations listed.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Dominguez, all those who are not in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye? None heard, motion carries, thank you. The next item, preliminary consideration replat of the Greenhouse subdivision, Lot one, Block one. Into Lot one A, two, three, four and five, Block one, Greenhouse subdivision replat. And the granting of the variance of section two dash three point seven. Of the subdivision order to allow a reduction. In access easement width from fifty feet to forty feet, intent is residential.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, the applicant is Casa Verde Venture, the engineer of record is Beva Consulting LLC. Approximately twenty acres located north of Jackham and west of Casa Verde Road. And the zoning for this five lot development is B three, general location. Aerial view. Street view. The proposed replat. Comments from planning. Utility coordination, water utilities. And the proposed motion.
Ralph, can you put back the picture where the street is right next to the apartment complex? All right, the right away, right there at the apartment complex where that street is built, what is that right away?
So the the entrance, it's all fifty feet except right there where you see the the building, that's a good call. It chokes down to forty and that's why there's a building in the way, that's the request for the variance. Right there, because there is a building in the way.
The pavement width is what, thirty two back to back or what?
I would need to verify, the engineer might be able to provide that information.
All right. Let me have the engineer of record.
Mr. Chairman, staff commissioners, Oscar Castillo representing Greenhouse subdivision. And to answer your question, Mr. Chairman. There's a few parts that they're short, but most of them is thirty one and we may need to adjust it with with the replat too. But for now, we're gonna propose to table the item i- if okay with you guys.
Okay, that's fine. All right, thank you, Oscar. We have a motion, motion to table, please.
Motion to table.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second, the Valina.
Second by the Valina, if we're not in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye? Motion carries, next item are, they are all final flats and final replats, item nine, A, B, C. And then. Item ten is the consideration of the model subdivision compliance, A, B. Can we take them all together, can we have a motion to hear them together? Item nine, A, B and ten, A and B, I'm sorry, A, B and C and nine and ten A and B.
Motion to hear them together.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Second, all those who are not in favor, signify by saying aye? None heard, motion carries, can we have a motion for approval?
Motion for approval.
Motion, second. Second.
Second.
All right, all those who are not in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye? None heard, motion carries, all right? We're moving into director's comments, Kirby?
Yes, sir, as some of you may be aware, I will be resigning effective May seventeenth. Which is two weeks, which is one week from Monday. And I don't wanna go into the reasons, it's it's personal, but I do wanna say that I wish I could stay, I wanna stay. Laredo is a beautiful place and I've, I've fell in love with it these last couple of years. It's, there's a lot of places you can go in America. If I took you, chairman, and blindfolded you and kidnapped you, took you on a plane. And flew you through a connection. Got you off the plane, took you to the middle of the town and took off your blindfold and said. And said, Chairman Villarreal, where are we? And you would look and see, oh, well, let's see, there's the Chili's. There's the Super Walmart, there's the tract homes, I don't know, are we in, are we in Montana? Are we in Michigan, are we in California? Are we in Dallas, I I don't know, where are we? Not that we don't have those things here, but if I took you to Laredo and I I took the blindfold off. Everyone would know you're somewhere unique, you're not somewhere like everywhere else. And there's a real beauty in that and I and I've come to love it and of course, Laredo, like everywhere, is not without its challenges. But there's also a lot that's it's got going for it and it it has been a privilege to serve as your planning director these last two years. We have done a lot. As a team, to totally overhaul this entire department. To 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 do online and and bring everything online and digital, to get new tools. We've done over a hundred and fifty trainings between our weekly trainings, departmental trainings, interdepartmental trainings. Trainings to our boards and commissions, trainings to to new members who come in. And everything that we've done, we've done as a team. And what I firmly believe, probably has a lot to do with my culture and where I come from. But if you ask me what makes a great organization, it's not a leader, it's not a great leader, it's a great process. So that's what we've really strived these last three, two years, is to create a great process in this department that will outlive me. And hopefully outlive all of our planners that we have here in the department, even the youngest like Amanda, who may be here for many years, hopefully. So we're, we are, I'm very grateful to have served as your planning director and and I don't know what's next, I've gotta take care of. Some family issues, but. But I'm sure I'll land on my feet, but I have learned a lot here, I'm very grateful for it. And and I, it's been a pleasure to work with each one of you on the planning commission.
Kirby, I certainly wanna thank you for your leadership and re-doing that planning department, I think that you brought it up. To speed as best as you could, you did a lot of good changes to the city. And certainly I wanna thank you for two years, there was a lot of things that you accomplished, a lot of things you've done. Certainly, the recoding is a big, big challenge that we still need to finish, but you got it going and you got it started. The comprehensive plan issues that came out were also very, very challenging at the beginning, but. Obviously, it's a very good blueprint for anyone else to follow into the future. And for me, I have nothing to praise for the work you did locally, for everything you've accomplished here and and I thank you very much and I wish you the best luck in your future.
Thank you. Thank you, and just so you understand a little bit of the carryover, Ms. Guerra is gonna be the interim director until a new director is appointed. And Recode is all scheduled out and ready to go through, you're gonna get an email, Mr. Chairman, soon, today probably, that shares the outline of. The draft is now online, I guess I might as well show you. If you go to our planning website. And you go to our new planning website, one of one of the things we accomplished as a team. If you go to the homepage and you click on projects and you, right here is Recode Laredo. So click on projects, Recode, and you'll get to the Recode page, which gives an explanation of the code. And then it has the draft by chapters with the table of contents of each chapter there, so you can see. Okay, I'm interested in this, that's this draft, rather than having to go through the draft individually, so. That's all online as of today, and like I said, chairman, you will receive an email here soon. That spells out our plan to bring it to, through city review, through final city review. It's gone through multiple drafts internally, but now it's gonna go through a final city review, then it's gonna go for public outreach this summer. And we're gonna do an initial and then an all day workshop with the Laredo Builders Association. So we're gonna spend many hours with them and then when that draft goes through. An update, then we will bring it to the city council and the planning commission in a joint meeting in August. And then at that point, that's the ten yard line. And it really depends on what council wants to do at that point, do they need additional review, do they need additional changes or are they good? And they say, no, bring it back to the next regular meeting, we're gonna adopt it. So we we have a plan for this and for other projects and things we're working on, I've worked very hard these last few weeks. And I will continue to work hard to make sure that this transition is a smooth one and that and that you're not, that. And and that my leaving doesn't in any way inconvenience the, what the planning department has planned. And so if you have any additional questions, I can answer them, but that's. Miss Miss Guerra is gonna do a great job carrying things forward.
Thank you, there, is anybody else on the commission, anything else they would like to add? All right? New motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, in a second, all those in favor? All those who are not in favor, signify by saying aye? Heard, motion carries, thank you all very much, Kirby, and best of luck to you.
Thank you, Erasmo, I appreciate it and.